The chief is in training, huh?
Yeah. I'm being a little weird today.
It is.
Yeah. I just did that on my phone.
Well, are we ready, Alberto?
Yes. Just turn on your mics and then we're ready to go, right?
We'll call the meeting to order. It is May 8, 2025. The time is 5:21. Welcome to our city council meeting. Please silence your cell phones or devices. The intent of the city council meeting is to conduct city business, but also give the opportunity of the community for public comments and voice their concerns or questions they may have. With that, would you please stand with me for the presidential allegiance?
So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an integrity republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, I will ask our city clerk to please, deputy city clerk, to please do roll call to make sure we do have a call.
Councilman Reynosa.
Here.
Councilman Verdugo.
Here.
Councilman Hernandez.
Here.
Mayor Proton Gamas.
Present.
Mayor Piscial.
Here. For the record, everyone is present. And with that, we'll go into, would you also please read the other statement?
Government Code Section 54952.3, the members of the city council successor agency are entitled to receive a total of $450 per month because of being elected to the city council. They receive no other compensation for sitting as a member of successor agency.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go into item number three, which is public comments, announcements, and also unscheduled appearances. Would you also read that statement?
Any person may directly address the council agency at this time on any item on the agenda or on any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council successor agency. State law prohibits any member of the council agency from commenting or acting on matters not on the agenda. Three minutes are allowed per person.
Thank you. And with that, we'll open public comment. So if we have anybody on the audience that would like to address our council, please also come to the podium and just tell your name.
Good evening. My name is Bob Ramos. I live in Hanford and I was visiting your council meeting tonight. Very interesting as we drove into town. Okay, there you go. Okay, as we drove into town, I noticed that you have a sign illuminated announcing the meeting tonight. And I think that's a great idea. I attend most of the meetings in Hanford. We don't do that. Seemed like maybe we should look into that and see where we could put a sign. It's hard enough to get public participation in city government. And hopefully, your sign will bring the local people here to bring you their ideas and thoughts and comments and so forth, because the more people you have attend the meetings, the stronger the community you have. So I commend you on the notification up on the street there that as we came into town. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other ones online, maybe?
Yes, I see Veronica has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Veronica.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to take some time tonight to address a concern that I've already brought to your guys' attention at the last council meeting in regards to the hazardous waste plan that is currently being discussed and will be voted on in July. I came and I brought my concerns, which I do recall as I listened to the end of the meeting was kind of seemed to be that it was said that I'm trying to scare the community. And that is not what is happening. This is an actual state regulatory agency is looking to approve this hazardous waste plan that could really, it could really affect our community. And regardless, it has nothing to do with what I had brought up prior, my concern with the article I read in the LA Times about the LA fires that Alvaro said we had already discussed. No, this plan came after that. And I brought, you know, and it was kind of disheartening because as I sat in the call in Berkeley, there was a number of city officials, local elected officials in there voicing their concerns for the constituents. And not one of ours was on there, knowing that we have a landfill so close to our homes and your constituents could be negatively impacted. But then, it's really great to see that, you know, we had elected officials at a school board meeting voicing their concerns about a soccer field. You know, I mean, I feel like our priorities are not where they should be. And I really feel that you guys are taking this plan lightly. There's only a couple months before a state regulatory agency votes on it. And if they do, we're not going to have a choice. Once it gets approved, we aren't going to have a choice. And I really feel that that is something that you guys should show to the community, at least read what it's about. It's not fake news. There's videos of the meetings. It's very easy to understand. We actually met with one of the board members the other day that is saying she's not going to vote for it because she understands how it could negatively affect communities like ours. And I just wanted to come. I do not come to these meetings and with not wanting to scare the community. I want to bring awareness because I want people to know before things happen. And I want to take this time, but I think it was very, it is, it's very disappointing that we do not have our local officials on these types of meetings getting to know and voicing their concerns for the community members. But we have people from Richmond, Berkeley, Antioch, Contra Costa County, elected officials, all there voicing concerns. And here we are with them at landfill so close to our homes and not one of you all were there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments online or maybe on the audience?
So on Zoom, we only seem to have staff. And then Ms. Veronica, I don't know if on Facebook, there have been any comments?
We have two viewers that no one's responded so far. The screen is cut off.
You want to give one last sweep?
Yeah. So this, we're doing public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to address city council, would you please stand forward? This is your opportunity. If not, then we'll close public comments and continue with the agenda. Item number four is consent calendar. And we have 4A and 4B. And all items listed under the consent calendar are routine and approved only and are enacted by one motion or action. And we have to consider the City of Avano and successor agency approval minute for April 10, 2025. Also, 4B is to consider entering into a comprehensive MOU with the Avano Rotary Club for use of the city facilities and resources. So at this time, do we have any motions?
Motion to approve both A and B. Since we already talked about the Avano Rotary Club and it was signed by Mr. Tutto, and I'll prove the minutes.
So.
Just a quick note that Just a quick note that speaking earlier with Leo council, there was a little bit of updated language on the identification. Um, that's included in the printed packet and the online version as well.
We did.
That was just some clarification.
The clarifications. So we do have a first, a first by council member, Mayor Protein Gomez, and second by council member Reynosa, Rocco, please.
Councilman Reynosa.
Yeah.
Councilman Verdugo.
No.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gamas.
Yeah.
Mayor Piscial.
Yes. So for the record, motion passes, we have four yes and one no. Thank you. With that, we'll go into item number six, which is activity report, special presentations, and also our committee reports. I don't find, I'm sorry, so sorry. Item number five, which is mayor and council member and also the successor agency items for consideration. And we do have a special recognition with Mr. Mark Owens. He is the operation supervisor at the California Resources Corporation, best known for his RCA. And I believe Mr. Lopez would take this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So just very briefly, do want to give a special recognition as the council and community is aware. We just finished old timers weekend. It was last Friday through Sunday, nonstop, morning and night. I didn't get home Sunday until about 9:30 in the evening to go celebrate my mom's birthday. But it was well worth it to hang out most of the afternoon with our community members going out to Tark Canyon. And then the late afternoon around the old oil fields, what we call discovery well, all the areas back that used to be Standard Chevron and now CRC. We do have a special recognition we like to give to Mark Owen. For the past 13 years, he's been a key member of our community in assisting these sort of special events in collaboration with the Avenue Rotary Club, especially with the city of Avon. Many have probably seen him. He tries always give us the red carpet treatment in terms of the Derrick tree lighting. He made sure that all those lights were replaced. He made sure the CRC rented out the boom pole to get that all fixed up. He tried to make sure that we had a little area brewing out some plywood so we could have our, our hot chocolate and cookies. Likewise, during old timers weekend, he always gives us a very well curated tour. And even sets up a little booth with information about discovery well, information about oil back, back then. Um, I think some of the council has been able to participate in that. And for the past 13 years, as I mentioned, he's been a key member in helping make that happen. Um, it seems that Mr. Owen will be transferred closer to Bakersfield. So we may not see him as often anymore, but I know he's still going to keep ties here to the community. And just in kind of recognition of all that he has done, council and Avenue Rotary felt it special to kind of at least give him a little plaque or recognition for what he's done. So out of mayor, you'd like to read off the certificate real quickly?
Sure. So this certificate of recognition is given to Mark Owen in appreciation of your outstanding dedication and generous contribution to the city of Avon. The Avenue Rotary Club and the greater community. Your efforts from sharing the rich history of our oil hills to coordinating tours and supporting events like Old Timers Day and also the Pistachio Days have left a lasting mark. Thank you for always showing up with heart and purpose. Avon is grateful for all you have done and will truly miss you. And this will be signed by the mayor and also the city manager.
And before we confer these to Mr. Owen out of Avenue Rotary, Mr. Tuttle would like to say a little something. He always has something to say. There you go.
I don't see it in the Kerman heels. So I just, you know, on behalf of the community of Avon, I just want to give you our grateful thanks for your support and collaboration. I've been there many, many times at the oil directory lining. And the community feels welcome. And it's, it's really nice to see Rotary members, but also community members come and enjoy that evening with hot chocolate cookies. And we really thank you for your support and dedication.
The city of Avon, you guys.
Come over to the podium because we're online so they can hear you. Yeah, we've, we've been.
Put you on the spot.
On the spot. The city of Avon, uh, the way I saw you guys working in the community as much as you do, it, it's very inspiring. So it actually lit a fire in myself. So whenever I do anything like that, it's from the heart. I mean it. So whenever the kids come up there, especially when the kids come up there, it's very enjoyable. When everybody enjoys the Christmas event and the oil carriers. Um, you guys light my fire. Avon did not need me. I needed Avon. You guys did do that. You guys are so inspiring. Coming from Bakersfield, you don't see this as much. You see smaller outbursts of this kind of thing, but the whole town, you guys join in celebration for one another. I find that community. That's the way to be. You guys inspire me.
Thank you for your kind words. Don't go away. Don't go away.
Oh. Can't leave you. Can't let you go without something. Thank you. Thank you. Everybody needs to know you picked the colorblind guy to do the life on the prison.
So you say you're from, you grew up, you grew up in Kerman City? Are you a native? You actually grew up in Kerman City?
I went to school in Kerman City. I lived in five points according to my mom because I have the picture still. I attended church around here. I worked in McCarthy Farms on Utica and Twisted Street. So in all honesty, I came back to my stomping grounds as a child. Don't tell my boss, I was playing on the pumping units in the very back of the base. Went out with a kid and now I'm the supervisor over. That's karma. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Come on, let's take a picture.
They want more. These are the rare ones.
We got to come over here.
Oh, they're better with it.
Yeah.
There you go. Take me out again. If you jump well. Move this. I need to jump off.
This might be why he's leaving. He's like, you know what? That's too much for me now.
It's against my, it's against my wishes.
All right, just step back a little bit more, Mark.
Mr. Tuttle.
We can't step back.
Sir, Verdugo is to the right. There you go. Perfect. That's good. One, two, and three. I'll jump in right now.
It's a selfie. It's a selfie.
Let's both get it.
We'll push it all the way. I know. We'll do this.
You. Football Neil.
We're just going to get your arm.
Two, three.
Anyway. I took a question.
I need you. Thank you.
I work set for dinner.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Oh, yeah. Yeah, councilors. It's a good thing.
Now we can move on to numbers.
Well, Moses would like to.
Recognition.
So we've got a.
We need to, oh, okay.
So there are motion to.
A motion to approve the certificate to Mr. Owens.
We have a first and a second by, second by Councilman Verdugo, Rocco, please.
Councilman Reynosa.
Yes.
Councilman Verdugo.
Yes.
Councilman Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gamas.
Yes.
Mayor Piscial.
Yes. For the record, five, oh, motion passes. Now we'll go into item number six, and that is the activity reports and special presentation, also committee reports. And we do have a six, uh, one that is public works code enforcement, animal control department. Also, uh, activity report by the director, uh, probably was director Scott Davis. I believe he's on the line.
Yes, he is. Go ahead, Scott.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and congratulations, Mark, and thank you for all the help that you contributed to public works when we're up there working also. This evening you have our report. It's, uh, our code enforcement continues to work on the property abatements and graffiti. Illegal vendors are picking up. Luke is working flex hours to address that problem. And he's also working with Kings County Health regarding home meal vendors and micro kitchens uh, to make sure that he can address those properly and, and they can actually step in and help, help with that. And his reports attached. Our parks and landscape, we're just continuing to maintain all of our landscape areas. Uh, Caltrans has started this, they call them seat walls. Um, they're going to be nice benches with some, my understanding tile artwork attached to them uh, on skylines, part of the Clean California program. And I'm not sure, but the way they have set up some of the, the traffic control signs, they may also be doing are the 33, but obviously that's not on us. Um, animal control just continues to maintain that animal shelter. They, they do a great job out there. Their spay and neuter program for April had 12 for the public and 15 for the shelter. And they have scheduled the vaccination clinic for May 29th. So, uh, hopefully that'll be a good turnout for all of our community as well. Our streets, we just continue to maintain all of our streets, signs, flags and banners, patching is needed. And we continue to work with the city engineer on the new projects. Distribution, continuing to repair and maintain the distribution system. We did have a leak on the 16 inch main behind the prison. Um, we are still working on that. It, it was the very end of April. Excuse me. And we were able to get a, a band put on it due to having valving problems trying to get the tank sticks are isolated. And we're continuing to work with the prison to get that tank isolated so we can do the, the full repair. But the leak is very, very minimal right now. So, um, we've got a little bit of time. The wastewater collection, we did have two calls for sewer plugs in March and we're continuing the enzyme treatment. And we continue to maintain our city-owned property vehicles and equipment and report monthly or and quarterly to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. Um, we did have a busy month. I know that it looks like a short report, but it's kind of hard to keep track of everything that we actually do. But are there any questions?
Any questions, Scott? Yes, I have a couple, Scotty.
Yes.
Um, on the animal control reports here, there's two different ones. One's Fabinho, one's Corcoran. Why are we getting Corcoran's reports?
They want our city.
Other than the dogs are, go ahead.
Well, we, we just want the council to know how many dogs we're getting from Corcoran. And what's happening with that. I did notice that, um, on his report after, after this, that the total entries was 38 on both reports, but he does try and keep it separated as far as what comes in from Corcoran, what remains and, and what we get adopted out. And so there is, uh, what is brought into the shelter from Corcoran and what we brought in, in, from in town. So it's, it's just, it's just so we know how many of the dogs are actually coming from Corcoran. And not just what we, we catch in town.
Yeah. I mean, they're almost identical numbers. So that's why I was kind of, are these mirroring each other or, or just, uh?
Our, the total brought to shelter for April was the 15 plus the nine.
Okay.
And remaining is, is still. We actually have probably that number of dogs in there, 29 from the city and the, uh, excuse me, I'm looking at my reports also.
Yeah.
And Corcoran, we had 29 still from Corcoran remaining, and we've got the 35 that we caught from Avon still remaining. So these numbers look high. And I did talk with Raoul the beginning of this week, and they are scheduled for tomorrow to have nine large rescues and, and I believe it was 10 or 12 small dog rescues. And then next week, they also have another small dog rescue coming in. April was not a good month for rescues showing up. And so we do have a lot of dogs in the shelter right now.
I was just wondering because they almost look identical. So I thought it would just mirror on each other. But I mean, I know there's a couple of different numbers, but I was.
Right. And I, I think his total entries are what's mirroring, mirroring themselves more so. And so that does need to be clarified with, with him and his report. So I will find out about that, but I, I do know that, that the remaining and the ones brought in for the month are correct for Corcoran and for Avon. We do have a lot of dogs out there right now.
My other question was, um, the vehicle abatement report here. When was the last time we actually abated a vehicle in town? I don't, I don't think we've seen any vehicles being abated at all.
I can't answer the last time the vehicle was abated, but some of them, if they're on the street, is up to the PD. And the vehicle's tagged in the yards, depending on whether they meet the criteria for being abated or not. Is maybe why we haven't. If it's on the street, it's not our code enforcement right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other question for Scott? Uh, Scott, can you give us a little, an update on the skyline with Caltrans? They are designed the benches overall. Well, would you know, would you have?
So from everything that they're doing right now, they did pour the pad that goes up to the bench. Yesterday, they started pouring the actual seat wall behind those pads. Um, to my knowledge, they are on schedule with that. And, and I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody about what's actually happening on 33, if that is happening. It's just an assumption in my mind that they're putting warning signs when you're pulling out onto 33 from some of our streets leaving the town in that direction, that they have the construction ahead signs type stuff set up. So, um, I haven't, Arthur's actually been a little more involved directly with those people, but, um, because he, he's gone out with them to, to check all of our sprinkler systems to see what was working and what wasn't. So if they break something, we'll go back through when they're completed. Not sure when they're going to be completely done. And I did notice today that they were removing the paint from the control panel at the stoplight. So I don't know if that was a mistake on their side and they're actually going to do the wrap or that wasn't the exact design they needed or whatever. Um, in all honesty, I, I haven't had as much time to concentrate on that since Caltrans is controlling that and they have a Caltrans inspector on site every day. But I do observe enough that I do know they're actually pouring the seat walls now. They've got all the, the pads poured to go from the sidewalk to the seat wall. And, and they're progressing well on, on their, their plans with that.
Yeah, I'll just chime in very quickly, Scott. Um, yeah, the communication with Caltrans.
Yeah, I'll just chime in very quickly, Scott, um, yeah, the communication with Caltrans regarding the Clean California and their. Timeline with the project has been murky. At least in terms of the art with the box and then the benches. Staff did help kind of pick which, which, uh, artwork would be selected. Um, we did work with Fresno Arts Council to kind of get that. Processed and finding the artists, finding the designs. So on that electrical box, there was, it was supposed to be a wrap, I believe that they got it changed to painting on, on the surface. And staff were the ones who caught when Caltrans went and started rubbing it off. So we did contact Fresno Arts Council, they got in contact with Caltrans, my understanding that it was their mistake. And they were gonna figure out how to either redo it or remedy it. I'm assuming if they're cleaning it off, they probably just gonna have to start over. So it's unfortunate, but that's a, that was Caltrans own mistake, the, their own communications regarding the project doesn't seem to be very fluid.
And they're only about two and a half years behind schedule, so. I guess that shouldn't be a surprise, because the last I had talked to one of the Caltrans people regarding that box. It was made clear that that was part of the Clean California project. So it's surprising that they sent a crew out to, to strip the paint off of it.
Yep.
Cool.
On a weekend, too.
They were working on it again today, too.
Well, thank you, Scott, but, uh, I know you're real busy, but keep, keep an eye on them because that beautification. Ground that the city received was supposed to be what, six hundred thousand dollars?
Million.
A million.
Presented here, the council.
And, and, uh, you know, we expect for them to probably do, do more than what they're doing right now.
Well, and, and honestly, Mr. Mayor, with, with the money that they put in just to hire a contractor to come in and put those. They are permanent temporary construction signage because they put them on a pole that's buried in the ground. If this was a short-term project, they would have used the barricades with signs on them. So. I, I, I can't speak to how much money they're spending, that's probably unnecessary. But I do know that they can spend a million dollars really, really fast through Caltrans. And I'd need to leave it at that.
Hey, well, that's for, uh, and so awareness of the project and, uh, you know, hoping to. See it done soon, since they're kind of behind on that schedule.
Yes.
Any other question for Scott? That, uh, thank you, Scott, for that, uh, report.
You're welcome and thank you, council members.
Thank you, Scott.
And with that, we'll also go with the city engineers activity report, uh. Javier Andrade from A and M Consulting Engineers and I believe he's online.
No, actually Javier was unable to make it, he had a family emergency.
Yeah, um, he did email me or text message me about that, so. Um, the, the biggest update I have, um. Not including any of the grants and all the things that he is working on as well. The community building, um, they've been receiving a lot of, a lot of the supplies, equipment and things that are gonna be put into the building. And I spoke with Alexis today with A and M and they will be back out on Monday, there was some. Some of the submittal approvals that they've been waiting on. And so they hadn't done. Basically, they haven't done much work out there at all in the last couple of weeks, but Monday. They will start and they plan on not stopping. In fact, I was asked to get, uh, to find the specifications for the generator. For some reason that was evidently left out, the generator was included in the bid plans. But the, the actual specifications were not, so I'll, I'll be looking for that, but they are planning on starting. And, uh, getting that thing completed. In a non-stop process, starting Monday. And maybe Tony has something more on, on the grants and things that, that we're looking at, but, uh, that's, that's what I have for Javier right now.
Yeah, they, uh, staff worked with A and M on a, um, planning grant that we just received. I know that that went well, to then hopefully get, get more Caltrans construction grants. Um, and I know, I think between staff, finance and A and M. We're sharing kind of all the grants that we do have currently active, the ones we're waiting on. Is to kind of be able to keep track of all the drawdowns we'll need to be doing in the future. But. Otherwise, uh, A and M is helping with some other special projects on some remodeling. Of some of our buildings that we're looking to kind of utilize a little bit more.
Okay, thanks for that update.
Is there any word on when they're gonna come back, the, that, that road company, you gotta come back and redo part of the cut off?
The cutoff road?
It was supposed to be back in May or something like that, I think Javier said.
I know my, my understanding was they were waiting for it to get warm enough, I don't know, Scott, do you have any updates?
I, I. No, I do not at this time, um, and maybe that is something, because I know Javier's also been busy with a lot of other things. Definitely something that we will, uh, I'm making the note of it and, and I'll talk to Javier about that. And maybe we can contact that company and, and get that started also.
Is that on the Avonel, uh, site?
Yeah, the.
The city of Avonel.
The work that was done last year. There's still.
Yeah, that, the chip seal, um, was under warranty. And, and most of the areas that, that everybody sees where the chip seal is actually coming off was the, the re, the repaved areas. And I think part of the problem with it, um, they, they may have had a, a different type of spray they could have put on that. To make the chip seal adhere better, because that, that asphalt actually had zero traffic and zero weather. When they put the chip seal down and so that surface of that brand-new asphalt would not allow the chip seal to adhere properly. So that's what, we've already talked to the company about that and they're, they're very aware of it. And so we just need to follow up and, and see when and, uh, what can be done to get that rectified.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Thank you for that update. With that, uh, we'll go into next item on the agenda and that is, uh, six-two. And that is IT Department Activity Report by Humberto de Mudes, IT Director.
Hey, he's coming around. We lost him. Lost his connection. He did just step out, yeah, we can move on to. Community activities.
Will council agree?
Yes.
We, uh, then we'll move up to, uh, item three, which is, uh, Recreation Department Activity Report. By Anna Lada Community Activities, uh, Senior Leader.
City Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Uh, my report, uh, for updates, we have the Old Timers Day, uh, it was a collaborative. Effort between the local Rotary Club and the City of Avonel, they kicked off the event on Friday with the Fish Fry, that was held at the Recreation Center. We showed the fights, a movie, um, staff was out there, provided free popcorn and smore stations for the community. On Saturday, um, here's an update on what, um, myself was included in for the event. Um, they started the event with breakfast at the Veterans Hall by the Avonel Assembly of God. I spoke to Amber and they served eighty-five meals that day, which was down about twenty, twenty-five meals compared to their, um, calculations from the previous years. Um, the parade, I'm not sure on how many parade entries there were. The park activities started about one o'clock, we had our bounce houses, a boat ride. There was game stations inside the rec center, the orbee station that was held on the empty field of the school. Um, our volunteers were face painting and watching the bounce houses. We had a total of eight food vendors, ten information and two merchandise vendors. Um, then in the evening, the fight was shown, local bands and it was, uh, great, um, it was a great turnout, it was the most. That I've seen turnout as far as any community event that has been held. So, um, I enjoyed myself, the community seemed to enjoy themselves as well, so it was a hit. Um, I'm currently working on the Summer Kids Pop Program and the Independence Day Celebration. Staff continues to collaborate with Valley Voices on the food distributions, there'll be, one will be held this Friday at the Recreation Center. Um, and I'm currently working with Hisa La with the Family Engagement Center to provide, um, I'm sorry, not with the Family Engagement Center. She's doing the work through the sunrise to provide a movie day for her students, um, at the end of May. And so that is my report, does council have any questions?
Any question for the Reg Department?
Uh, I just have a comment, um, for the vets, uh, you show the vets, um. Nice, uh, pictures of, and their names.
Slideshow.
A slide.
Oh, for the Independence Day celebration, correct.
Of the vets here in Avonel. I've, um, had someone approach me and say that their picture was up there, but the name was incorrect.
Okay, so if you can reach out or you.
I already reached out to Tommy, so maybe he can refer that information to you.
Yeah, actually, he's, he's, he's the one who does the slideshow, correct?
Okay, yeah, because it's really, I'm a military family myself, so, uh, it's important for us to.
No, most definitely, I'm not that techie, yeah.
So, thank you.
You're welcome, any other questions?
Any questions, comments?
Uh, I think it would be a great idea, because I know we have, uh, more people in the community that have, uh. Either on the army or another department there. So if they can have, uh, they can, they can send a picture and their information of them.
Yeah, definitely, so a flyer will be posted hopefully by the end of next week. And letting the community know about the event and then again, letting them know that they're able to send in their picture with their rank information. And that will be provided, um, be shown on the slideshow.
Perfect.
Yes.
One more question. Just wanna thank, uh, the Reg Department for the hard work. It was, uh, more than a well-planned and it was a very, very, uh, uh, well-attended event. Even Friday, was surprised that even Friday, usually just the dinner, but I believe that, uh. The fight of Jose Ramirez and people sitting, uh, having a nice evening in the park. Was, was appreciated, Saturday was also. Our cell was there on Friday until almost one P M, Friday.
Right.
I was there.
But then there was people there Saturday also that has been after midnight and I believe, uh. Even though Sunday was kind of slowed, uh, low attendance in the morning tour to Tarkanyan. But I think at the, uh, the second one was well-attended.
Yeah.
It's a lot of people, so, so, uh. Surprising that a lot of, uh, the community are not aware of, uh, those tours and had never been. In a discovery well or Tarkanyan and see what, you know, the, uh, nature, mother nature has to offer.
Right.
Real close to our homes. So wanna thank the whole department volunteers, I think you also did a great job recruiting those volunteers. There were a lot of, uh, students from, uh, V Sunset, uh, and I think that makes a difference in bringing the community together. And, uh, even Friday, they were helping serving the meals, the fish fry and, and I think, uh. It was a success, wanna thank you for that.
Yeah, and I know Carla and Noah were the spearheads to, to old timers, I jumped in where I was able to help and stuff, but. Um, they were, they were the lead on this one and it turned out very well.
Yeah, that's, that's some, something that I would like to ask, uh. I, I know there's a lot of people behind scenes that doesn't get recognized sometimes. And it'd be nice to have like a list and being able to recognize all those volunteers that do it with a heart.
Right.
You know, help, come help and support our events.
Right, definitely, it was, it was definitely a team, it was Carla, Noah, Lupe, Anthony, myself, we were all. Had our own little piece involved in it and everything, it took, literally, it took the whole team to, to put that one on.
Even Brian and what's her name?
Michelle.
Michelle took over.
Yeah, they, yes, we pulled them in and they, they helped as well, yes.
Yeah, so even the, uh. What, what was the, uh, table, the?
The booth?
V I P?
Oh, yes.
The V I P worker really nice, I mean, you guys were able to set up, uh, table plaques, some pistachios, some, uh. You know, it, it turned out really, really good, I think it was almost on top.
Yeah, we just had like probably three or four tables left. So it's getting the community, reintroducing them to some of the things that Rotary used to do with Old Timers Day and. You know, just modernizing it a little bit so they're exposed and wanting to be part of it, so. I've yet to hear a negative complaint, um, even though, even though it went until midnight. And I will just real quickly, I don't have all the final numbers. I did get to count finally the cash boxes, we did have electronic point of sales, which helped a lot. So between both of those, we had, let me one second. Had about twenty-two thousand dollars in sales.
Wow.
Almost, almost twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, I will actually, between, but the wholesale are about twelve thousand and ten thousand of sponsorships. So we're still kind of going through all the expenditures, we have to pay the music and the stage. Um, but I think we will probably Rotary won that three to five thousand at least. So that is obviously on a lot of dependency on the volunteers, city staff and help, so. Uh, that will, the long-term help with scholarships for high school students, which is something that I know Rotary is working on.
Yeah, lastly, I just would like to, uh, mention that, uh, I was approached by several community members. Who really appreciated, uh, the event and gave a very, very positive comments about the way it was set up. It was different from other years, like, uh, food vendors were on the street. And that, that was kind of more open space for the park, but they also liked, uh, the, uh, giving the opportunity to our local. Uh, musicians to participate in the event, like, uh, you know, I believe there were about three groups from, from.
Two locals and two out of town.
So, you know, they, they're, they're, you know, much appreciated and, and there was like. At least five or six people that came to me and, and probably other ones came to other people, but. It was, it was really appreciated, so just wanna say that for the record.
Yes, I agree, I, I love the setup of the food vendors on the Monterey Street. I think that's, that's, that was really nice, that's the plan for Independence Day Celebration.
Whatever staff wants to do, I'm all for it. I will just throw real quick on one thing we haven't gotten a chance to fully discuss. Uh, working with the Family Engagement Center, we had scheduled a Familia Night. We meant to do one last month and we pushed it to this month, so we will be coordinating something for Friday, probably at the Veterans Hall. Full tables, whole game, a lot there, yeah, maybe a little movie on the side. So, next Friday, probably what, four to eight, four to six. Just to kind of continue that engagement that we've been focusing on with the community. Something low, low effort, but just to kind of get the community out to utilize our facilities and enjoy some of the stuff we can offer.
Uh, maybe we're talking about bringing the community together, would you also would like to mention that event that is coming for the teachers? Uh, I believe it's a dinner or.
I'm actually going to allow Francisco Lopez to present on that one. I've been, no, please, yeah. I will admit that I have not been as involved on this one. I'm trying, I'm trying to pull back finally, little by little.
But I did see the flyer and it looks, looks really nice.
Yeah, so if you're.
What's that for me or?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Good evening, you guys have been, okay, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Hi there, I'm Francisco Lopez, uh, Rotary member, um, just wanted to share that, uh, Rotary, uh, is hoping on May twentieth. Uh, so in about ten days, uh, we're gonna, um, a little more than ten days, uh. Have a teacher appreciation dinner, uh, for the.
That's still the current?
Yes.
Flyer, okay.
Uh, I added a little more details about it being, um, in collaboration with the city and, and the school district. Um, so, uh, just because we're so, uh, inter, intertwined with our, with our education system. We have a lot of teachers here, um, the last count that Mr. Ruiz, uh, sent to me, we have thirty-six active teachers. Um, living in the community, they're here or Kettleman City, six retired, um, that they have kind of there. Um, living in the community, either here or Kettleman City, six retired um that they have kind of there. So that's the focus. Uh, we are also gonna open up to staff. Um, and uh Mr. Ruiz was very kind uh to offer up the uh high school gym. Uh, to be a space where we're gonna offer up a, a dinner from five to six thirty is the plan. It's also the night of the Wyland Awards. Which is the other uh big, big uh event during, during this uh springtime um that the school district does. Uh, to honor the community members and but especially the high achieving students and, and other uh staff that, that they have. And so. Um, kind of in conjunction with this month of celebrating Avonall, um you know, we had. A nice parade with all, all, a, a lot of uh community members, a lot of the cheer. We had a local church. Uh, you know, lots of stuff going on. Uh, and so this is just kind of a continuation of that, but um more focused on uh having the teachers. Uh, ho- our hometown teachers. Um, Rotary is hoping maybe in the fall to do a all teachers uh dinner. So we're not excluding any of the teachers, a lot of the teachers that commute here, uh cuz I know we have quite a bit that commute. Uh, but we did wanna honor the ones that are here and usually give back just a little bit more. Uh, cuz they're, they're nearby or they, 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 they do that and some of them that have retired um here. So. I know a lot of people here on the board who are uh ex-buccaneers or alumni buccaneers, uh know. Of teachers, I can think of Mr. Anderson for one who, who, who made a big impact in my life. And so just wanted to kinda pay, keep paying it forward and thank them for that. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or.
Any question for Francisco?
About that.
We're good to go.
Yeah, so yeah, so and just uh, you know, hope, hoping to keep that going. One other thing kind of tied to um uh old timer, old timers day as well. Um, is that I'm gonna try, so I'm putting that out there in, in the universe to set up the uh, uh, re- reunion. Um, there at Old Timers Day, it tends to be one of the better days to do it. Um. Uh, it's been hard. There's been ongoing efforts year after year. There's kind of been an older crew that's been doing it at the vets hall. Um, but I think a lot of folks would like to actually be around where the old timers day is going on. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to set up a little committee uh of, of alumni and other folks um to hopefully put a tent. At the park and maybe just have kinda like some tables and, and do it really simple, all, all, all buccaneers uh. In uh, uh reunion kind of thing and set it up maybe by decades and stuff like that. So hopefully people can come. Ha- get a drink from the bar, come on over and have a good time. So that's hopefully the, the, the goal for Old Timers Day two thousand twenty-six. So, gotta get ready for that.
Having a process twenty twenty-five yet.
So, no, uh, so. There's no conflict since we're gonna have those three bands at the same time? So is the, they're not gonna overlap? The, the.
The Wyland Awards, from my understanding, start at seven? It's in the evening and, and so part, part of um having spoken with the superintendent was it'd be nice to be able to have the teachers there and that they could walk over. But then uh, uh, over to the auditorium. Yeah, to the auditorium. So that way it'd be kind of a nice, even if they're at school, they can come over. Uh, hang out and then if they have students or wanna, wanna see, you know, cuz a, a, a lot of times it's, it's uh, you know, students are. Uh, just getting college acceptances or, you know, getting scholarships, all those other things. So it tends to be kinda one of those, one of those nights that, that, that can work out pretty well for that. So. Uh, Rotary is gonna be helping out. We're gonna be recruiting Gloria, our favorite uh daughter from last year. Um, to, to be one of our, uh, be the caterer for that. So that's kind of the plan.
Sounds like good coordination.
Yeah, so hopefully it all works out. So.
Thank you.
Into it. Thank you.
So without go back to uh the I T department activity report and we have Umberto Bermudes. He's the I T director.
This time he made it.
I could have, I could not have picked a better time to do that. Stinks so long. Yes, it is. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. How's it going?
Good.
All right, all right. So we'll, uh, we'll try to keep this one short. So uh for our internet, um, our ISP negotiation, uh negotiations were on hold. As a staff was prioritizing the uh planning, uh, the planning for Old Timers Day twenty twenty-five. Uh, that said, um, we are just to give you a small update on that. Um, still waiting to hear back from uh Spectrum for their final plan, uh plan or final cost for construction. Um, we do have a, uh, we do have a service, um. We do have a cost per service on their end. Um, A T and T has given their final draft for uh, for their proposal. And uh Cal dot net is still, we're still um, uh, city manager and I are still working on details for that. But again, that's been on hold because of the, because of the old timers day planning. Um, public wifi plan, we uh, we finally got to, uh, we kinda, we're starting to roll that out now. Um, if you were at Old Timers Day twenty twenty-five. If you opened up your uh, if you opened up your phone and tried to uh open up wifi, you'll notice that the uh, the Avonall Tech Center guest uh site was available throughout the entire park. Um, so we are very happy about that. Uh, we made sure that the uh, that anybody who was connecting to this network was not allowed to, uh, was not allowed to get, engage in piracy. Any, any devices that are connected to that um, to that network were isolated, so. Meaning my phone could not see Tony's phone, for instance, or would be able to see anybody else's and so on and so forth. But it's a pretty, it was a pretty solid, uh, pretty solid connection out there. Um. The uh, the single uh, or rather the uh, the single tower that we had running, uh pushing out is uh forming out into a beam. We do have a separate line that was uh, that was run through. Uh, so we're just waiting to have a uh separate pole installed to give a, to give a full site coverage right now. I think we're just, uh, there's a small dead zone. Um, towards the uh, the northeast corner leading towards the um. Uh, closer to the, the district. But other than that, the uh, the coverage is excellent. You're getting full speed the entire time, full fifty megs down if you're uh, if you're um. Using the guest network and you're getting full speeds if you're uh, if you're using the private staff network as well. So I'm pretty happy that the uh, the experiment is working. Um, hopefully we'll see a reliability over the next coming months and which means we'll, we'll, once we uh, once we get that tested, we'll uh, we'll start rolling that out to our other parks as well. So for our phones, um, staff is reopening the uh, the porting discussion with Verizon now that we've, now that the clerical error has been resolved. Uh, police pots uh phones right now are currently in a degraded state unfortunately due to the uh, due to the small wind or do the small. Rain that we had about two weeks ago. Um, ongoing calls can be made, but incoming, incoming calls for all calls are red, are directed uh immediately to dispatch. So this is whether it be a emergency or both emergency and non-emergency calls. So it does, it does sort of uh, it does sort of flood up um. The uh, the dispatch line a little bit. I'm not happy with this, I'm not happy with this right now. Um, that said, now that we do have a, we do have an A T and T representative that we can, that we can get a hold of. Um, we are actually able to, or we've been starting the porting process over that way. And now that we have our uh, now that we have a dedicated internet connection of our own outside of Kings County I T. Uh, we're able to uh continue with the voice solution. Um, or sorry, the uh, the voice over I P solution. So the internet phones again for that building. And so that way we can uh, that, that way we can just run that independently from the county. So that's, we're looking, we're looking pretty solid there. It just comes down to how soon we can get a hold of uh, get a hold of our, our Verizon rep. Our A T and T representative is aware of the plan. Okay, so on the note of A T and T, uh, we had the chance to uh, we finally were able to uh, to, to remove a majority of our uh. Multi-protocol label switching services, which was the uh, which was the link that uh, was initially put in place in twenty nineteen, eighteen, twenty nineteen. To get all of the sites to talk to each other in the first place. As we were all aware, that system never worked. But we were having issues trying to find it on the bill, so, or rather on the CalNet bill is the way that is uh. As the way that's set up is that every California agency that's with A T and T is essentially shared a bill and another agency will split that and hand them out to a. Or as, or rather distribute them across uh every agency that's attached to it. So it's not the cleanest system in the world, but finally, or fortunately, our um. Our current A T and T rep was able to figure out where this uh, where the extra car, where we are encouraging these extra costs. So as of right now, it's gonna save us approximately three thousand dollars a month. Um, this is actually part of what uh A T and T is purpo- or current new proposal is looking like. It's the same, it's the same system. It'd be running under a different connection. So instead of running over those old copper lines, it's running over fiber. So instead of one megabit and three megabits a second down. Which is not enough to load an email in twenty twenty-five, we're now getting proper twenty twenty-five, five hundred gigabit, hundred meg speeds. So that's part of their planning as well. And I will present that in the proposal as soon as, as soon as um. Um, we have our final word from uh, from Cal dot net outside of not A T and T CalNet, but Cal dot net, the uh, the other I S P that we've worked with. Who's uh, who reached her, who had their presentation about two uh, two meetings ago. Uh, for emails, we're still uh, the shared inboxes are going to be converted alongside the website redesign. Again, that's going to be uh, we're slated for the end of July. Uh, for regular services, I uh, and or sorry, I T department is continuing making progress on establishing in-house police I T services. To be ready by the end of fiscal year. So again, lines up with the uh, the website redesign. Uh, I T and utilities were uh, were to begin migrating the water plants, uh alarm systems from pots to alternative services. The idea is just getting away from A T and T. Um, with forty-five and, uh, with forty-five days into the trial, we haven't had any downtime, um. Which is rather spectacular, given the, given the cellular issues that tradition, that we traditionally have outside by the uh, outside of the um. Outside of the prison, as you know, there are cell jammers out there, but whatever system they have in place right now seems to be working despite being cellular. It's been down, it's been up for forty-five, well, I suppose forty, fifty days or about forty-eight days at this point, with no reported downtime. So we're looking to migrate the second plant over to this new system as well, given that it's been reliable. Luckily, the uh, the actual installation wasn't all that hard either, so. Um, the physical installation took no more than about two hours and the software installation uh, or the software configuration was about forty-five minutes on my end. And another, another, another forty-five minutes or so uh, with a call uh from the uh, from the agency that sold us the uh, sold us the equipment. So we're on a, uh, we will be on a five-year contract with them if um, if uh utilities and I decide that this is the service that we want, that we are happy with. And I think it's what we're gonna be sticking with. Uh, staff is still continuing to uh, or is still continuing to uh. I mean, or do our security maintenance and documentation reporting for all of our services. Um, for uh. Uh, other jobs managed by the I T or other jobs taken care of by the I T department uh this month. Uh, the website redesign is still continuing. I T staff is working. With the new civic, uh, have the chance to uh meet up with the new civic plus project manager, um, our old one. Or uh, the one that we began with is no longer is, is on maternity leave at the moment. So we are working with the new, or so we're working with new staff. And we've gotten her caught up to speed on where we are on the project. Uh, the I T manager specifically uh, did major aid in planning with Old Timers Day. I took a step back this year. I only acted as a, as a, I only acted as a separate set of hands this time around. As I was continuing, as I, my main focus has been on working on the uh, the I T, the police I T uh migration. Um, we are still continuing to maintain the digital signage for our C S D and county, or for the uh school district, Dan Kings County Behavioral Health. And we are still continuing to maintain the website and provide tech support across all facilities. I tried to keep it short. It wasn't as short as I thought it was. But do we have any questions?
Yeah, uh, cuz I know this has been kind of, you've allowed the I T manager to kinda handle more of the smaller task and even take care of the bigger picture items, but. Could you go into a little bit about the transfer from the county I T services to in-house and what the savings we anticipate having there as well?
So after speaking to our uh, to speaking to Director of Administrative Services, um. The uh, currently Kings County I T is charging us about, it's anywhere, anywhere from seven to eight thousand dollars a month. Uh, for their police services. Um, we are an est- we are getting an estimated cost of, just based on the uh, the subscriptions that we need to purchase. So Microsoft three sixty-five for our police officers' emails, um, a uh, a V P N service. So that way they're um, so that way we can uh. That way their M B T units can communicate back to, uh, back to home base, back to the police department building and so on. Um, we are looking at an ongoing cost of maybe about fifteen hundred a month versus the uh. Versus the eight thousand that uh Kings County I T is uh charging us. So that's about uh, that's about sixty-five hundred dollars we'd be saving on average. We still, there's still a couple of one-time costs or one-time licensing costs that we have to pay, but those won't, I, I'm not anticipating those to exceed more than three thousand dollars, so.
How reliable is that? Uh.
Is what portion?
So we're not, we're not with the county anymore, right? Or, or we're in the transition or?
Yeah, so we've sent the letter notifying them that we're canceling their services. Moving on to man, they manage the system. That's all they do.
Okay.
And we're moving to managing all in-house through our own I T department.
Okay.
And we did that previously four or five years ago when we.
Twenty twenty-two-ish.
Yeah, when the city was also under that same kind of design and contract, that saved us about three thousand dollars a month versus that. Versus paying them and service that they weren't even coming to our, to our sites or even helping with anything. So. We were the ones doing all the work, even before I was city manager, I was doing I T work.
Before the I T department was even established, there was uh, I was handling I T work as well. Um, are we allowed to share that story?
Yeah, both of us.
So it was um, so within the first year of COVID, um, we got a call from Kings County I T who directed a uh, who directed us over to uh Fresno F B I. Regarding a, regarding a virus that was floating around within the network uh relating back to a city of Avonall. Um, I was expected to take lead on this as the theater event coordinator to give you idea, to give you an idea of how dissatisfied we are with the service. It was handled. I was able to handle this, but you can see it was kinda, you can see why we haven't, we weren't, you can see why the city wasn't happy with their services back then. That's not exactly how you wanna be handled like that.
Other questions? Just would like to say that every time you're able to manage in-house, uh reflects a huge savings. To, to the entity that uh, you know, the beginning, there's, there's a cost for the infrastructure. Infrastructure, software and, and database that you need, but. At the end, I think it's proving savings, huge savings to hopefully our city. We're looking at. About seventy thousand dollars savings a year. Just uh, taking over the uh police uh.
I T.
And I think for that, I've, you know, I would like to commend you and thank you for continuing. You know, this being a long process since you began as the theater manager. But uh, behind the scenes working on, on the computers, the phone system, you know. Kind of re- doing the infrastructure that we need to be uh self-sufficient. So, I think uh, you know, on the beginning, we had a, uh, so uh. You know, it, it was a good advantage to have the uh, school district tower next to the park. But unfortunately, you know, because of uh state regulations, we were unable to continue using their. Uh, internet services, which maybe make, made us to look for other options and find solutions that are. Cost effective to our community because we're really on a bind when it comes to extra funding. So, you know, uh, you know, I guess, you know, we'll continue uh evolving. And making progress. On the I T department.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other question, comments?
Thank you.
So, thank you Umberto. And with uh, we'll move over to uh. Six B, which is a presentation report. We have none. Also have item number seven, which is public hearings. We have none. And uh, we do have uh, item number H, uh, it's all business. I don't know if there's an update with the S R O. Uh, agreement?
Not specifically. Uh, I've used this time to mostly just kinda report back on our work with the school district. So do you wanna give a huge thanks to the superintendent, Mr. Reese, for helping us during Old Timers Weekend on providing spaces? And being able to waive those costs and light for benefit of the community, uh, the practice field and such. Uh, the parking lot, there was a softball tournament, but I believe the coach was able to secure those fields. Um, so hoping we can continue that sort of partnership. Terms of the S R O and such, we have not met specifically on that topic, but we have met. On some other items. Um, a few weeks ago, I think I mentioned that. Um, already to the mayor, we didn't meet since then, but we did have a meeting uh between staff and the superintendent, the school district staff. Just to go over some other potential partnerships, spaces, recreation, uh, maybe some training programs or groups of interest. That will help not just the students, but also the community at large and just creating more cohesion across the board. Um, we do have a meeting scheduled on Monday, I believe. So hopefully that can continue bearing more fruit. And as the I T director mentioned, we are working with them closely on the L E D sign at the entrance of the city. Um, just, we finally have that working and just getting some little kinks and making sure getting a schedule together. Which I believe the I T manager did reach out to their webmaster just to kinda coordinate how that would all work, but otherwise. Continuing to work together.
Hello, Rudy. I did have a question about that signal.
Yes.
It's. It's out open. It's open to vandalism. Uh, when is it gonna start getting closed for that?
Right, so the gentleman.
Worry that I have that somebody's gonna go, some kids gonna go up there, cutting wires and there we go.
We hope not. And the, and I mentioned this to the superintendent last week that uh, we're gonna be asking for logos to all the schools. We wanna do a kind of a design like welcome to Avonall, home of, and maybe a logo of each of the school sites here in town. Um, and then Silario, the gentleman who's also helped us with entertainment, he does plan to enclose everything. He just wants to get those edges done. Any decorative kind of metal, sheet metal that we like to have. He does plan to enclose everything, he just wants to get those edges done, any decorative kind of metal, sheet metal that we like to have. Um, and then he'll enclose it all and at least till now, none of the panels have messed up anymore, that was the other reason. He's been testing it to make sure that we can leave it alone and not have to touch it for at least ten years. Absolutely, valid concern.
Uh, I also would like to take the opportunity to mention that, uh. The rich sunset actually has new signs on every school site, uh, Avonall, uh, Tamarack Elementary School. Avonall Elementary School, Middle School and the High School. And, and Kerman too, so I think. The district office, so. And, uh, you know, those signs tells you the date, the time and temperature and climate, climate, so it's a lot of good information. That it will be provided to our community, so I want to, you know, acknowledge that and thank you because that brings, uh, more lives to our community. So, we'll move on, yes.
I will just say one quick thing in support of your efforts for that sign. Mister Ramos noted coming into town and knowing all of you folks have had children in this system. And may still have children in the system, it's so important that the, those sets signs use for both the school, your, you. We come out here as members of our community for a reason, we really love this community, truly love it. Between your police department, your interaction with your school districts, it shows a small commonality. Whether we go to a block party or we go to a school, uh, career day, we get the same feeling. And we hear the same conjecture of the people talking about the, the community at large. And so if you can use that sign for announcing school board meetings as well as your, those kind of activities, you get more involvement. The more parents you have in here, I'd like to see every child filled in the school board room. That shows me commitment to their school, but I just, I commend you on that sign and what you're trying to do.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, so that will go into new business, we have none. Uh, item number ten, uh. This correspondence announcements and closing comments before we go into close session, so, uh. There any closing comments from our deputy city clerk? No announcements? Move over to our city manager.
I'll keep it short, uh, appreciate a speedy meeting, thank you for, uh, accommodating my schedule with the last meeting. Um, a lot that's happened over the last few weeks, the biggest one being old timers day, which is everyone's hers, was pretty good success. Um, we've, think the community's really enjoyed it and we're hoping to continue building off of that. Uh, staff is already planning our next big event, which will be the Fourth of July Independence Day show. But again, just want to invite everyone to the familia night next Friday, we'll send out a flyer for that. Tomorrow, the seniors will be going on a picnic to Visalia. Um, so I believe mayor's wife and we'll have Angie also taking them. So hopefully we're able to take about seventeen of them. Um, other than that, we'll keep everybody posted and just catching up on a lot of work right now. Things have been productive, thank you.
We'll go over into our, uh, legal, uh, Tony.
Uh, nothing of this time there, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move over to, uh, council member Inosa, do you have any comments, closing comments?
No, I just want to appreciate everybody that helped out for the, uh, old timers day, it, it was a total success. I have not heard any bad comment on it, I, hopefully I don't hear one, but every, everything I've been hearing is. Everybody, everybody loved it. Everybody loved, uh, the community to get it together, even my sister came down from Fresno and she said, wow, we don't, we don't have this, uh. Near where she lives there, but. They, they loved it too, they got how, how, everybody, everything was set up properly, so I appreciate everybody that helped.
Thank you. Me, uh, we'll go to council member Verdugo, any closing comments?
Well, uh, I, I was part of the, uh, my church that did the breakfast on Saturday and, uh.
Super tasty.
And if you were out there, I was on that grill, I mean, non-stop, seemed like, um, but, uh, we had a good. Wish would have better turnout, but I, I think last year we had our. The, the glider people that came over, because I went over there and told them we have breakfast, so, but, uh, they're, they're going to be here till this weekend, they're going to have the races this weekend here at the. Um, the glider races this weekend, um, and after that, I, I jumped in the car with the chief. During the parade, got to the park and had to turn around, come back and, uh, start cleaning up and, uh, getting ready for, uh, the. Class, all class reunion that we had, uh, set up for that and by the time I was then setting up, I had to go home, take a shower and then come back and. Start, uh, the, the reunion or the. And start getting people come in and, uh, that turned out. You know, it's, this reunion is basically, uh, start out with the older generation, sixties, fifties people. Uh, thirties, some of the, you know, and a lot of those people are, are either getting too old to either, either, uh, drive out here or get somebody to bring them out. Or they passed away, um, our numbers were pretty low this year from almost a hundred last year to almost about only forty-five this year. Um, and I know that the classroom reunion that was supposed to be held here last, that same day, last Saturday. Um, got canceled due to the fact that they didn't, only had four people per, uh, sign up to come to it. Uh, we did invite them to go over there, but I don't think nobody showed up over there, but, um, that was kind of sad to see that happen, um. Uh, we are going to try to, um. Know now that, uh, uh, Mr. Lopez over there, Francisco, uh, try to collaborate with more, get more of the eighties people to come to our. Reunion here, because that's the era I grew up in, and so hopefully we'll get more people come and, uh. Yeah, you know, because we are getting to be the old timers now, so, but, uh. Yeah, so. Um, I wasn't able to, uh, be at the park and, uh, I'm glad that it turned out pretty well, um. Uh, I did was a little disappointed though during the Friday during the, oh, that's nothing, uh, the fish fry, I was out there helping out with that fish fry. And the only, the comments that kept coming up about that fish fry, you should guys, you, you guys should do this once a month. Because, um, they liked it and they wanted more of it, so, uh.
That was ninety plates that evening.
Yeah, and then a couple of weeks ago, before that, our, the, the youth football team, uh, the, the group, uh, did a fish fry at the vet saw and. We sold over two hundred and fifty tickets, meals. Um, and, uh, so it's, 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 uh, it's, uh. It's something that people like and liked and want it back and want to keep going, so we're going to, we're considering maybe doing it. Maybe again, some new features. And that's the youth program that's doing it, so that's already a community there, so, um, other than that, that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, that will go into our next council member, Hernandez, what's your comments?
I just want to thank, uh, Mayor Portengamas, she made a couple of tickets to the senior center, so a couple of seniors got to enjoy the, uh. Dinner that's for the fresh one, thank you.
We'll go with the mayor protein, Gomez.
I'd just like to. The old timers parade was a, a really good success, I was there Friday, Saturday, unfortunately, I couldn't be there on Sunday, but. It was a re- really nice turnout and, um. And I saw every single one of us there, if not helping, participating, so, thank you.
Thank you, I just, uh, would like to report very quickly to that, uh, today I was invited to. This table, the city of Fresno, uh, this morning, uh, ten thirty, uh, there was probably about. Six hundred people there, they, it was at the, uh, convention center. Uh, the old convention center next to Selina Arena on, uh, Kern Street and, uh, Elm Street. Uh, you know, it's, uh, it kind of opened your eyes what big cities are doing, their, their volunteering. Volunteer force is, uh, thirty-seven thousand volunteers for the city of Fresno. Uh, they, they've been, uh, reduced their, their crime rates, uh, homicides by seventy percent. From seventy-four to seven on the, on last year. Uh, twenty twenty-one was really bad, I guess they had their highest because after COVID. They also been, uh, 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 they have a record of, uh, removing graffiti within twenty-four hours, they have a hotline number. And also, uh, some, uh, email programs for people will call or send an email. And within twenty-four hours, they get that notification, they go in and paint it. They've been painting, uh, uh, parking rashes, it's like, you know, some of them are very, very old. Probably a hundred plus years old and they've been the, you know, but I guess, uh, the, uh, the mayor's, uh. Vision and, and promise when he ran for, for the, uh, mayor position. Was beautify Fresno, reduce crime and help people in need, so they, they have like, uh, like a pantry food bank. Where they also, where they not only provide food on a daily basis. And for people who are really in need and sometimes don't have anything to put on the table, they go there and they, they get food. But not only that, they also have a group of volunteers and also city staff that they provide. Uh, they help them, uh, fill in applications, helping the waiver on, on the website to submit applications. Or hard copies, also referrals, also medical, uh, people who need, uh, referrals for. You know, mental health or suicidal programs, that kind of stuff, they're, they're, they're really, really been changing the face. For Fresno, that one of the things that I took out of today, they, their credit rating is the best in, uh, forty-plus years. So their audits have been incredibly good, so even though they're gonna have a time hard, uh. Uh, for the next fiscal year, the budget is still gonna be in the black. It's gonna be a, a positive, uh, uh, budget and, and, uh, you know. Uh, actually, I set up a couple of meetings with some of the, uh, uh, departments. That were to see what, what kind of ideas or program we, we can bring to Avonall. Uh, Confia, who's been a nonprofit with, uh, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of the big Fresno area. They actually do come out of the Fresno County, they also come to, uh, Kings County, Tulare County. And, and, uh, you know, they go as far as Verkesfield to provide, uh. Those kind of information and services to our community. You know, they've been at the middle school, they've been at the high school, they've been at the baseball, I think we had three or four events with them. So they're, they would like to, uh, meet with us and, uh, plan another event and see how we can, uh, collaborate and maybe, uh. Put an eye on them together, uh. Soon, probably by the end of the summer. Uh, I also, you know, been representing the city at the, uh, the Kings County Association of Governments. The Kings Area Transit, uh, Rural Transit, uh, Agency, uh. They have informed us that, uh, they'll be doing phase two on the Avonall cutoff. Which will be from probably, uh, Avenue twenty-five to Laurel. Uh, no, past Laurel will be, uh. They're doing four miles this time and it's going to start by the middle of June. And, uh, this time they, they're saying it's going to take about three months and it'll be done. So, 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 uh. Also, uh, you know, they have the, they will be having the grand opening of the, of the rural transit, uh, new building on Nacy Avenue. Uh, probably people who have for, or are already aware, it's a beautiful building that they got, uh. Funding from the Biden administration, infrastructure, uh. Uh, project that, uh, that has a thirty million dollar investment. Uh, and it'll be, uh, the grand opening is in December. Uh, and I believe our, our seniors have been invited because they're the ones that actually use most of the, uh, public transit. So they even, uh, taking advantage of a Saturday, uh, trip to Hanford, believe they had three hours, four hours?
Three hours.
Three hours, they pick him up Friday, uh, Saturday morning, they take him to the different, uh, places in Hanford, Walmart or.
Is it your, your, you choose the destination?
Yeah, each one of the passengers choose where they, they would like to be drop off and then they pick him up, but, uh, but, uh. At the end of the three hours, then bring him back to Avonall, so that's a service they didn't have before. And it, it's, uh, increasing, I guess there's more demand now that they don't even have the capacity to, to take them all, right?
And they only take a bus when they hold like ten people, two wheelers, so it's saying, they just.
So tomorrow they're having, uh, this, uh, commission on aging are having their, uh, annual, uh, event. At, uh, Mooney Park in Visalia, you know, so, uh, believe, uh. Twenty-some, uh, seniors, uh, apply or register to participate. Oh, twenty-five? So, you know, a lot of activity, work offer actually to have an event here in, in Avonall, uh, hopefully at a sport complex. For all the communities from, uh, uh, the commission and aging, because there, it's not only Kings County, there, there's only. By Tulare County Commission and Aging, so that's why we have events in, uh, Visalia, uh, Boris Park. And, uh, Armona, but we're looking into, so, because we see the need that our seniors instead of, uh. Being left, uh, not being able to participate, to bring one event here in Avonall where they all can participate, so we're planning. At that event, hopefully with, uh, council support, we will make it happen, hopefully next year or. And we'll work on it. Uh, we'll go, going into close session and if we have anything to report at our close, close session. We'll be doing so in probably about an hour, hour and a half. So I would like to thank each one of you for attending our city council, and it's nice to see, uh, people here. Uh, thanks to Grand Jury, our captain, commander, Mr. Lopez. And we have the pleasure of meeting, uh, a future, uh, board member. Who hopefully last call soon and, uh, Mr. Reese Superintendent, well, I want to know, know him, this is our. Uh, Rich Sanses Superintendent, Juan Reese.
We just came out of closed session but we don't have anything to report out of closed session.